Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August 7th, 2024 Grants Pass City Council meeting. We start our meetings with a moment of silence, so please join us for that. Please rise for the flag salute.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia stands, one nation, under our own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have Valerie Lovelace's absent tonight and everyone else is in the room, so that's nice to not have any remote tonight. City manager's gonna get us started with a presentation on ordinance involving camping in the parks.
Good evening, Mayor, council, staff, members of the public. It's with great enthusiasm that I'm here today with you. This has been an effort that has occurred over months and actually years to get us to where we are today. And it's been an effort that has included individuals like yourselves in the audience, city council as policy leaders, staff also as professionals, to give you an opportunity to adopt a code that I believe represents the spirit of where council wants to go that includes community input. So with that, there's two things that we'll be talking about today. Council's adoption of time, place, and manner code amendments to Grants Pass municipal code, and then also a resolution for you to consider which identifies locations where campsites and individuals can rest. The way the agenda is set up today is I will go through and I'll review the code language that's in the ordinance, and then we'll move through the resolution which identifies the sites, turn it over for council questions, deliberation, and adoption with public comment associated with that also. So I'll cruise through some of these slides, but if you have any questions through the process, just please let me know. There are definitions which most codes and Oregon revised statutes start with. To camp means to maintain a campsite in a single location of city property for more than 24 hours. Campsite means a location upon city property where camping materials are placed. And camping materials include but are not limited to tents, huts, awnings, lean-to's, chairs, tarps, portable stoves, and other collections of personal property that are or reasonably appear to be arranged or used as camping accommodations. There's a couple more definitions within the code. City property means all property, including the parks, public right-of-way, parking lots, easements, or the land owned, leased, controlled, or managed by the city of Grants Pass. Personal property means any item that can be reasonably identified as belonging to an individual that has apparent value or utility. To relocate in the code means to move both the individual and the personal property off of the city property or to a different authorized city property. This definition does not include moving to another portion of the same city property. This really is just provides this part of the code, 5.61.030, is really just an exemption for special events like Cycle Oregon. Just states that if there's something that came into the city where the city was a sponsor or there was something, a big event that was occurring in the parks where camping was needed and approved, that council would have the flexibility to approve such a community event. Continuing on to 5.61.030 on camping regulated, this basically states that we have a resolution which will follow, which will talk about the camping locations. This just mentions that you will be establishing a resolution. The code does not define where the locations are. The code states that the locations will be defined by resolution which council will adopt. The reason for this is resolutions are a little more flexible than codes, so if something comes up where a new site is determined, it's easier for us to make that change, or if a site changes, it's easier for you to make that change also. The city shall remove individuals, personal property, and camping materials and campsites from city property consistent with ORS 195.505. That's basically saying that we will follow Oregon revised statutes which provides for 72 hours notice before removing homeless individuals established campsites. So we still have to comply with certain Oregon revised statutes, and that 72 hours still exists. This continues and part of Oregon revised statute states that if we do remove belongings that have some kind of value, that we must store them for 30 days. So we're also stating in the code that if we remove an established campsite that seems to have valuable valued items, that we do have to store them for 30 days. So, within the code on mitigation and penalties, there's sections here A and B which provides for mitigation when there's a demonstration on the party that meaningful opportunity has been taken to try to connect themselves with private resources or services or service providers to address the situation that created them to be homeless in the first place. So if someone is cited upon conviction, there is an opportunity for the judge to mitigate and deflect some of that if the individual shows that they've done something to try to address the issue that caused them to be homeless. This just mentions that there is a violation of this chapter, which is $50. And a resolution of council will be adopted which will have allowable locations. And I believe I'm gonna go into the resolution now. So that's the background of the ordinance and what's included in the ordinance when it comes to the resolution. The resolution states that in compliance with Grants Pass municipal code, the city will identify via resolution allowable sites for people experiencing homelessness to rest. The city of Grants Pass desires to identify city properties to balance what is objectively reasonable with the basic human need to sit, sleep, and lie with the public's expectations to be able to utilize public property for its intended use. When council was originally discussing this at a workshop and provided direction for staff, council identified five sites which are listed in front of you on the screen. Staff took these sites and looked at the feasibility of implementing these sites as potential locations. We have some recommendations for you with regards to those five sites. In response to that, we believe that three of the five sites do make sense. One site is not ready to be listed in the resolution, which is the site on 7th Street next to the police station where the exterminator is. So it's not recommended that we put that in a resolution at this time, but when that site is ready and the building has been demoed, then we can modify the resolution to include that site. The Hillcrest site was also mentioned as a potential option for camping materials to be established. It is not recommended by staff that we have the Hillcrest site as an established site. The return on investment would be relatively low compared to the other sites because of the size of the location. Also, there's a lot of conflicts that would occur at that site. The conflicts are such that that is where we run a lot of tactical operations out of. So we've got a lot of emergency vehicles coming and parking immediately adjacent to where we would have this established campsite, and we would be debriefing and getting ready to roll out and activate that site in front of individuals that may not be appropriate to have that information. We also have our training tower there where we do training operations even at 2:00 in the morning, where that place does get overspray from hoses and smoke and other things that are dealing with training. So because of the conflicts with that site, we're not recommending Hillcrest. In light of one site not being ready to go because there needs to be a home that needs to be demolished and Hillcrest not being recommended, staff looked at other opportunities throughout the city, and we provided maybe potential site if council wants to consider that, which is 704 Northwest 6th Street, which is on the corner of 6th and 8th Street, as for your consideration. When it comes to these four sites, they are listed in the resolution, but it's up to council to determine if you agree with those sites. You can have, you can take some away, or you can add more sites. It's just if you're gonna modify these four items, it would just need to be an amendment on the resolution before you adopt it. The four sites that are listed, I'll just give you an aerial sort of what those look like. The water treatment plant is listed here. This is J Street coming off here. This is the entrance into the water treatment plant. And we've got an area marked off delineated of about 1.3 acres. The way it would work is we'd be looking at having fencing on three sides of the delineated area. We're not looking at having a cage or doing something along those lines. We just need a delineated area with some added security. So we're looking at three sides, so we would have fencing here, fencing here, and we already have existing fencing here. That provides a clear delineation of where people can go and to set up their camp materials and to rest. At this location, this was designated, council mentioned they'd like to have up to 96 hours to rest, so we would have that delineated also. At each one of these locations that we've mentioned, staff is recommending that we have an ADA restroom and a hand washing station also present. So this would also have that. Along with, at this site, we're recommending on two sites that we also have a mobile camera trailer. And this is one of the sites that we'd recommend a mobile camera trailer be placed while this is in operation. This is also a temporary site. As we mentioned before, come May of '25, we probably looking at needing to find an alternative location, and we have got enough time to talk about that because we will be breaking ground and utilizing this site for the construction of the new water treatment plant. This site here is the south end of Riverside Park. It's got an address of 128 Redwood Highway. It backs on the U-turn for Christ Building. It has a natural terrain separation where this is an actual parcel that stands alone. It's approximately .36 acres. There is an elevation drop here, and it goes into a relatively flat area for the rest of Riverside Park where we have the frisbee golf and other things like that. So it's recommended again that we have fencing here. We already have the building and fencing building here. So we would only need one line of fencing. This would be open. And again, this would have restroom facilities and hand washing station available. The other site, which is the one that we've just added for your consideration because of the two that aren't, the one that's not recommended and the one that's not ready, so this is something you could consider have or not. This is on the corner of 6th and 8th Street. It's approximately a half acre, and we'd be looking at fencing this on three sides also with the same services being provided as the other ones that I mentioned. The fourth site that's listed in the resolution before you tonight is on East Park Street. It is the southeast portion of the Baker Park on the opposite side of the bridge, the road next to Parkway Fire Station. We'd be looking at delineating approximately 0.7 acres. That would be on the west side of the walking path. The reason why there's this gap here is there is a terrain drop, and it just doesn't, we would not be able to facilitate going from the road in. So we're delineating where there is relatively even flat ground, and we're looking at about that side, about .7 acres. This is the other location that we're recommending a temporary camera trailer be placed. So there's two of the four that we're recommending cameras. This would be one of the locations that we're recommending a camera also, with the other services being the same. This is the future site the council did mention. It's not in the resolution because it's not ready yet. And so once we adopt the resolution, we want to make sure that we can move forward with those sites. So this is something that we could add at a later date. This is on 712 Northeast 7th Street. The police station is here. Public parking for the police station is right here. The current structure that needs to be demoed is in about this location. Once we demo that building, this would be available. It's about 2.5 acres. And again, we'd have fencing on all three sides, along with the restroom and hand washing stations. The resolution adopting allowable locations, staff does have some concerns that we're creating a new level of service. We're looking at developing whether it be one, four, or five sites without an increase in staffing to manage this. This is a new program. We don't know how long it's gonna last. We don't know how long the city is gonna be managing this. We are flexing from a staff perspective to make this happen. We'll be doing a lot of contracts, but it still requires time to manage contracts, and there's gonna be some additional staff time and personnel to manage these when things come up. I just wanna make a note of that. We're looking at creating a separate budget so we can monitor the costs and make sure that next budget season, we can make sure the budget committee and yourselves are aware of what this service does provide. But I just do have some concern with regards to bandwidth. As we run really short on time, I'm concerned about things falling through the cracks, and just wanted to give you a heads up, we're gonna manage it, but I may need to come back to you depending on how this program goes with a request for additional staffing. We reached out to do diligence to communities that provide these services and also our city county insurance services, which is our insurance company. We asked if CIS, which is our insurance company, would they, would we still be covered if we operated these? And would this be covered? And they said, yes, it would be. They said they would be charging us $5,000 per site annually for the coverage of this. The city of Grants Pass picking four or five sites is unique, according to CIS, to other communities where they may have one or two. So they'd be looking at also potentially considering some kind of cap on these charges because we would be operating up to five sites potentially. CIS mentioned that there are some concerns with regards to state-created danger on these four sites. What they mentioned here, I think, is I just wanna make sure I've mentioned to council, the more improvements, plans, and processes, the more likely there will be a state-created danger in this regard. The safest path is to, according to CIS, designate a place where people are allowed to occupy campsite. The designated place should not be subject to obvious dangers as compared to where they are currently camping. So you don't wanna put them in a location that has more dangers than where they currently are resting and camping. And any improvements become a new baseline and must be maintained without a And any improvements become a new baseline and must be maintained with appropriate staffing. If it can't be staffed for the indefinite future, don't start it, was their recommendation. Here's a breakdown of the costs for the first year for the program. This includes the services that we talked about, and it includes waste management facilities. It includes hand washing station. It includes ADA restrooms at the sites. And this is for potentially five sites, so we're down one site until we get that one site ready and able, and includes the purchase of two camera trailers. And funding for this, there's really two funding sources. We do have some funding in parks management right now because we do have some additional ADA restrooms and hand washing stations in a couple of our parks. So we'll be able to utilize what we have budgeted there for some of that, and then the rest would need to come from general fund contingency or some other identified general fund source. Your call to action, Mayor and council, is the state of Oregon does require the cities adopt time, place, and manner code regulations according to House Bill 3115. Legal council's recommendation is council adopt something by August, which we are in August now. Your alternatives are to adopt both the ordinance and resolution as presented, adopt either the ordinance or resolution with changes. The cost, as I mentioned, would come from supplemental budget to recognize the new programs. We would do a supplemental budget in the future. It would come in front of you. And then potential motions are in front of you. This is an emergency clause. You would need to do a first and second reading. It would be enacted immediately if it passed tonight, and then also a second motion on the table for you with regards to the resolution identifying allowable locations. And with that, then concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Aaron. Questions, Rob, and then DJ, and then Rick.
Okay, Aaron, a couple of things. So when you say would be enacted immediately, even though we are not legally out from under the injunction, this would still go into effect tomorrow? Or could you clarify what you meant?
Sure. What this does is it would enact immediately. However, we would not start enforcing that and start the program until the injunction is lifted. But it does provide us a tool that once the injunction is lifted, we can immediately move into following our code. And in talking with Jason and Public Works, we would be doing what we can on the front end to where once that injunction is lifted, we'll be able to get the fencing in, the restrooms in, waste management established, and washing stations so we could be as immediate as possible after the injunction is lifted.
So wouldn't we be able to install the fencing and other things and prepare before the injunction is lifted?
Yes.
So literally we're one day to go?
We would be able to install some of the hardware, the fencing. It would just mean that we would be renting it earlier than normal. If we know that we've got a quick turnaround time, we may not need to implement that right off the bat. It just depends on how fluid the temporary fencing is.
So the other question I had was on Slide 9. You mentioned the city can remove camping materials, et cetera, et cetera. It would be posted with 72-hour notice. So, and I know that we talked about this a couple of times, council talked about this, and I'm still not clear on exactly what you meant. So if we institute this new ordinance, we're rolling, we've got the alternative sites going, and any person pitches a tent in the middle of a ball field, say, that tent can be there 72 hours, or that tent gets removed immediately, or how would that work?
So there's a couple of scenarios that works out, and I think maybe what would be best is if the chief would like to describe, because we've talked about this, how that would work. We do still have to comply with the 72-hours notice, but there's other things that we could do to encourage those individuals to move to the appropriate locations as identified by council.
Yeah, it's a really good question, and I think not only council, but the community is very curious as to how it actually works on the ground. The reality is that if somebody is spending more than, let's say, 24 hours in one of those locations, we can write them a citation, but we cannot forcibly remove them and/or their property without posting that campsite. Most of the individuals that we deal with do comply, and I think once we explain to people that the rules have changed, I think we'll see more compliance than not. But be prepared that you could have a passive-aggressive individual that decides to test us, and we will follow the rules, the Oregon revised statute built out from House Bill 3115 to move forward. There's lots of different tools within the tool belt within law enforcement as the enforcement arm of the city of Grants Pass. For example, if an individual receives more than two violations, city violations, within one year, they could be trespassed from that place. So for example, if an individual received a ticket for scattering rubbish and possession-controlled substance, methamphetamine, they would be immediately trespassed from that location, and if they decided not to leave, they'd be arrested. So that kind of gives you the flow of how things work. Hopefully that helped.
DJ.
Yeah, thank you, Aaron. So regarding the concerns that CIS has, any improvements becoming a new baseline that must be maintained with appropriate staffing? Could you elaborate on what they mean by improvements and speak to the theoretical staffing that would be required, and then also the staffing expectations that you have with this plan?
All right, so, yeah, their concern was whatever services you start with, you will probably own those services because, again, it's talking about the state-created danger also. If you're moving them from a location that doesn't have a lot of services to a location now that has waste management, hand washing station, and restrooms. And then let's say we change locations and we identify a new location, you'll have to have a minimum of those same services provided for them. So you're setting a baseline, and that's what their concern was. Make sure the baseline that you're setting, you're okay with indefinitely. And so from our perspective, from a staff perspective, we've talked about this, the majority of this is going to fall on Public Works' shoulders. It's going to be a facilities-type management issue, and from a budget perspective, we're going to be cost accounting that out of Public Works. So we don't have a person that's, this is it. We are, so we're looking at a number of contracts, et cetera, that we're going to work on. We don't know what this is going to be from a staffing perspective. We're going to make it happen, but I just was throwing that caveat out there because this is an unknown. And this is sort of a program that we may be establishing, or at least a temporary program we're establishing, so we need to make sure that we have that enough resources. We don't know what that looks like. So that's why I had that there. We need additional resources is important because I don't want us to suffer in other service levels to pick this up. It wouldn't be fair to my colleagues and to our customers if we're starting to create gaps and we're not performing to the level that we expect because of a new service. So it's hard to say right now what we expect and how much time it's going to take to manage this. It all depends on the success of the community, successful use of these, and how the conduct is occurring in these to really determine what level we may need to reach.
Thank you.
Rick.
Thank you, Aaron. On Slide 24, I'm going to continue with staffing. So in Eugene, on one of their campgrounds up there, they actually had one of the homeless people managing as a manager of the campground. Would we have that ability and under that, does that start becoming muddy water when we have staffing here? In other words, what flexibility and obligation do we have, and what flexibility do we have?
So that's a whole nother realm. That's jumping in way deeper. Right now, we're in the kiddie pool. You bring in someone that's a site facilitator, you're jumping in the deep end because now you're managing people. You've got, that's a much higher risk. That's like having volunteers come out and work for you and giving them power tools. Wait a second. Do you have enough training? There's way too much risk there that is not recommended.
So we don't have to go there?
No, not recommended to go there at all. Now, if a nonprofit or a service provider in our community would like to do that and provide that service, that's another story.
Dwayne, and then Joel.
So I was wondering for the benefit of the campers and citizens that aren't camping, the number of dispersed sites and enforcement action. I know that our enforcement folks are already stretched thin, and now you have all parks except for these places designated that would require some enforcement. And then these four places or five places or how many we end up with would also end up with some need for a public safety presence. And so I was wondering if we could hear from the chief on the thoughts on that and how that's going to work and what his druthers are. I don't know if you want to express that or not, but I just have some concerns about that because I know if I was managing your department, all of a sudden, my workload seemed like it increased quite a bit over water base now.
If you're asking me, counselor, my overall concerns, I'm happy to share them with you and the council and the team. Yes, I'm always worried about staffing. I've been asking for additional staffing ever since I came to Grants Pass, and that's typical for all police departments. We're all understaffed right now. We have a lot of reasons why. But we'll continue to utilize our community response team effectively and efficiently to manage this new problem essentially, and I feel that the team will do a fine job in managing what we're given with what we have. And we'll continue to evaluate everything day by day, and we will prioritize life and enforcement within Grants Pass will continue to go on. So, yeah, I'm concerned about that, but we haven't stepped over the line yet, and we'll do what we always do, and we do our very best, and I feel we've been super successful in this city for years. I just looked at some recent statistics from our community response team, and they continue to hold people accountable respectfully and professionally. But we write a lot of tickets, a lot of citations, and we take a lot of people to jail. So I do have concerns about that, but we'll work through it. I've also got concerns about the locations. The city manager already spoke to the Hillcrest location. It's a strategic spot. I also have concerns about the PD, although the PD area is not ready yet. The police department and our employees, we deal with confrontation. We deal with, we arrest people, we cite people, and we're not always the best of friends. And then we can have a population of people that are going to be right beside the police department that we may have arrested the night before. We might arrest that night or whatever the case may be, but I would be remiss if I didn't share that I do have a concern with that as well because I have to look out for the employees of the Grants Pass Police Department as well as the citizens of Grants Pass. So hopefully that kind of all came together to answer your question.
Dwayne, and then Rick.
Thank you. I have two questions hopefully here. We're about a month and a half out from the Ninth Circuit, not, I don't, Supreme Court ruling, and have we heard anything about a court date yet?
I still can't give you, I still do not, or Aaron Heisel does not have a date on when the Ninth Circuit Court will remove the injunction and lift that injunction. It could be next week. It could be 30 days from now. But I do not have a date for you, counsel.
My second question is, since I've talked to other council outside this place, if the councils, this council says we want to enforce it immediately, and who cares about the injunction, will law enforcement do that?
I can tell you, it's ultimately council's decision to go in that route, but before we move into that direction, I think you need to refer to discussions that we've had with your legal counsel, and I would highly encourage you to follow your legal counsel's advice.
Thank you.
Rick.
So Aaron, I know Ashland, next to their police department, was opening up a small section there for the homeless people. Do we have input from them how successful or challenging that site ended up being? Because I didn't know if the more law-abiding homeless people were occupying that site and not being a problem.
It's used by about 12 to 15 people per night, and they, you know, pick up and remove each day. It's one of those requirements. There are a lot of 24 hours there overnight. And so it's used, it's being used to some degree.
Are you aware of any conflicts or hassles?
No conflicts or red flags were brought to me with regards to major continual issues, but it is used to a small degree.
Okay, thank you.
Brian, and then DJ.
Thanks, Aaron. I have a few questions. The first one, the language in the packet specifically refers to city property. Does the way that this is written right now leave open other government property for camping, county property, state property, federal property that's within the city?
Yeah, it is city property.
Are there concerns about those other properties being used for camping that are not the sites that we're going to designate?
Yes, that's a question for the bigger, for everybody.
Okay, well, I'll change the question to people can camp in those locations the way this is written right now?
No, there's allowable, what we've done from a standpoint of the code is, you may recall, there was two that were proposed to you last time. That was one, an inclusion one, and an exclusion one. And what we're doing is we're defining inclusion. We're saying, here's where you can go. So we're defining it that way.
Okay, so literally the only places that they can legally camp are the ones that council designates?
That is correct.
Okay.
It makes it simple and clean.
Okay, thank you. Regarding the specific sites, I may have missed it, but the Baker site, did you touch on how the fencing is going to work at that site?
The Baker, yes, I did. Well, we're still going to fence, try to fence three different sides and leave one side open.
Okay. And then I was just curious with the security camera trailers that we're going to be getting for this. Chief, can you speak to the capability of those campers a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely. That's a great question, too. And when I looked at the numbers, and I know Jason and I worked together, we were just trying to add up maybe some lease options as well. I actually think that number's a little bit low if we were to purchase them. I've been recently working with a local vendor and giving a test drive on a surveillance trailer that has all the bells and whistles to include infrared, et cetera. So it really depends on how robust you want to get, but I think a basic mobile surveillance trailer is probably around $20,000-ish, but some of the more robust ones with a lot of the infrared, artificial intelligence technology, different kind of platforms for a dashboard, software, et cetera, you're going to see an elevated cost. The one I was recently test-driving is, I think, in the low 30s, and it was a really great system. It was solar-operated, and it was a really neat system. So getting a couple of them might take a while. Getting one to lease immediately could happen rather fast, so we'd have to choose location. But then you also have to talk about, we're not going to be monitoring these systems 24/7. That's, we're absolutely not going to do that. We just don't have the manpower to do it. But what we do have then, if something happens, then we can refer back to that video footage. But also, too, I think it's a quality deterrent because it will have flashy blue lights on top of it, and let's say, for example, you put it on the I Street property. That's a pretty dark area, and it will be pretty evident to most people that there are surveillance cameras watching that particular location, so that's going to have quite the impact in and of itself.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. I'll stop for now. Thanks.
DJ.
Yeah, I hear you loud and clear about your concerns regarding some of the sites and your recommendations. I think they're fair and wise. However, I'm a little bit clued into a slight concern for Parkway Fire Station as you're recommending a camera station there, this being an excellent opportunity to perhaps express some of those explicit concerns that you might have about Hillcrest Fire Station. I'm going to imagine that they're likened a little bit to Park, or no, I'm talking about Parkway. I'm talking about Parkway. I'm sorry, let me clarify that. The cameras on Parkway. You have explicit concerns about Hillcrest regarding training and those kind of things. I was moderately surprised not to hear any explicit I was moderately surprised not to hear any explicit concerns about Parkway. So if there's any opportunity, it would be now to express those.
Thank you for bringing that up. I have concerns about this entire city. I have a lot of concerns. I really do. And that's not to sound flippant, and I apologize if I did. There is an issue or it could be a potential risk at Parkway because our police officers also park their vehicles, personal vehicles there, and we deploy police officers from there. And obviously, our firefighters deploy from there every single day. And the Parkway Station, similar to Hillcrest and Redwood, is not fenced. Firefighters often have their gates up and they're off to an emergency, so there's a potential that they could forget to close it. And sometimes there might be some nefarious intended folks in the area that could slip in and maybe seal some stuff. Is that a concern? Absolutely. The terrain on that backside is kind of hidden a bit. If you're out there, I think there's some shrubs and some different foliage that kind of blocks the view if you're, if you're camping on that site. So it doesn't feel as difficult right now. I feel the pathway as a fire break is probably a good thing because I know there's some community members, what we call the Texas property, and we've had fires there before. That is also a concern of mine. And I just don't want to be stuck in the mud and say I'm concerned about everything, but that is certainly a concern of mine as well. And I appreciate you asking the question.
And to further that, we don't want to be a not in your backyard thing. We're trying to be as fair and reasonable as possible, but we do have concerns. We have concerns about any of the sites that are back or adjacent to residential. We have concerns about any of the sites that have a direct access to recreational facilities and parks, such as East Park and the Riverside Park location. Because you're designating certain areas right next to congregation areas of, next to parks. We have concerns about Sixth and A because that is right there with that congregation next to my colleagues who are going in and out often and individuals walking. And the busyness of the street of Sixth and A Street and the visibility does not make that a very good location either. Out of all of the sites, the only one that we would feel most comfortable, and that's only for a temporary time, and we still don't feel comfortable with it, is the water treatment plant site. The other sites all have encumbrances on them that are concerning on multiple levels. So I know that we're looking at other alternatives, and some of those alternatives might provide better opportunities, but they're not right now. They're not today. If council wants to identify sites right now, there's not a lot of good sites, but we have issues with some of those encumbrances and conflict, the potential conflicts with the majority of those sites.
Thank you for elaborating on that.
Dwayne and then Joel.
My question is, staff recommendation here about a month ago was for about fourteen park sites. But they didn't raise the flag then, why are they raising the flag for these sites when these sites are further away from residential and other things? But you didn't have those same issues back then when you were recommending fourteen?
So as you may recall, Counselor, the discussions that we had were with legal counsel. It was not staff that was recommending. It was a conversation, it was a discussion between legal counsel, staff, and city council to determine and come up with an opportunity to provide what's objectively reasonable. We moved into removing that and doing the language that we have today, which identifies certain sites. Did we have reservations with some of those sites? Yes, we did. Did council ask for that opinion on some of those sites? No, we were trying to accommodate everyone's needs and the three parties' discussions together. Yes, there's definitely, if you were to go back and pick parks, would we have concerns? You bet. The same concerns that we have with, or many of the same concerns that we have with some of the sites that have been chosen for discussion today.
So it strikes me that any plan has what we call a monitoring plan associated with it. Have you had any thoughts for, as we implement this, that what items we need to monitor? And we got some flexibility in the future. In fact, we probably should even put it on the agenda as part of that to look at those monitoring results and do we need to change what we're doing?
Yeah, we've, we've talked to service providers and there's general monitoring and services provided. That's why we're looking at trying to start with a bare minimum of services that will provide for safe and reasonable location for individuals to rest, establish a campground for a certain amount of time, and then also protect the city from a state-created danger issue to try to manage that appropriately. So we've looked at that. And again, this is, this is a new thing for the city, and we're, we're making a recommendation based on council's direction to identify some city-owned property for these sites.
And I'm making a statement through a question that then it would be a good idea to have some type of monitoring in the future that, that we're going to do as part of this plan. That would make sense so that if we need to change it in any way, it would trigger those changes.
Yes, Counsel, we're monitoring that. As I mentioned, we're gonna, based on this program, we'll likely need to do a budget adjustment, and it'll come in front of you. That's going to be the first monitoring, as we need to establish from a budget perspective, financially, how this, how this impacts the city. Operationally, we're looking at making sure and we're establishing a new cost accounting code for unhoused services to where my time, finances time, Jason's time, public safety's time, will all be monitored on how much it's costing us to provide this new service. And then we'll also be monitoring the conduct at those sites and looking at how that's going. So there is going to be a lot of monitoring, and we're prepared to do so. It's part of making sure that we're managing a site to make sure that we're managing risk associated with that site also.
Brian.
I just had a couple of quick questions about the fencing at specific sites. I'm not seeing it in the packet, but I, somewhere I read that the Riverside site, I think you were maybe recommending a permanent fence on that one side, and I just wanted you to elaborate on that.
Yeah, it was just initially discussed at a staff level. At this point in time, we're not recommending a permanent fence. We're just recommending some kind of delineation until such time that something else changes. I would not, not state that it's going to be a permanent fence.
Okay, and then on the Sixth and A site, you said three sides were going to be fenced. Which side were you planning on having un fenced?
Likely it would be the A Street, facing A Street.
Okay, and then for all of the temporary fencing, I would assume that it's going to have like the privacy screen material, or is it just going to be chain link wide open?
Chain link wide open, I believe, is what the price, what it is. And that's part of, we want to make sure we can monitor appropriately, too. We do have some concerns about it being visually, having, having the slats in it.
Okay, thanks.
Rob.
Yeah, I was looking for a little elaboration on the fencing, but Brian's questions covered it mostly. So are we talking six foot high then? What are you talking about?
Like standard construction fence panels that we could rent that we would place up as just delineation areas.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this time? No. All right, thank you, Erin.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
At this time, we're going to open this up to public comment. I'm going to let everyone know, when you come up to speak, you have two minutes. There's a green light that will come on at the podium there. When the yellow light goes off, you have thirty seconds left, so you need to start wrapping it up, but you don't need to freak out. When it turns red, it means that your time is up, and please stop promptly because I don't like to interrupt people, but I will if I have to. Other than that, I just want to remind you that this meeting needs to proceed in an effective and courteous manner and that you will all be allowed to state your positions in atmosphere from slander, threats, and other personal attacks. We don't allow signs or placards, outbursts of applause, or other disruptive behavior. We want to be courteous to each other and just give everybody a chance to, to say their thoughts. And then the council will go into deliberation after we close public comment. So with that said, when you come forward, please state your name and let us know whether or not you're a city resident. Is, is the mic on?
It's me, I'm fumbling. Good evening, mayor and council and staff. My name's Ruth Daley. I live in Grants Pass. I want to thank you all for all the work you've been doing and the time invested with this complex and very important issue. I recognize that you've inherited the situation due to decades of prior counselors poorly imagined housing policy, as well as previous council attitudes intended to make our unhoused neighbors uncomfortable enough to move along, hence a warranted lawsuit. I wasn't quite sure which side I was going to speak to. My pro argument would be that we know change is coming. Council and staff have worked hard, and it's always better to be cooperative when possible. I'm glad that areas are being proposed for our friends to rest rather than not. But I am speaking against the proposed changes due to what seems like a chaotic plan, a twenty-four hour timeframe causing more street traffic and more difficulty for those who already can't move without any ease, potentially nowhere for one to car camp, where are they going to go? Areas that are out in the open with no way to shelter from the elements, and difficulty, difficult access for community services to provide needed weekly outreach. I'm always here to advocate for our unhoused neighbors who are primarily folks who have grown up here in Grants Pass or have lived here for quite some time. Please let's err on the side of concern and care for those in impossible situations. I ask that you look at this some more before you make a decision. Thank you.
I'm Bruce Murray. I second everything that she said. I'm the medical officer, chief medical officer for Mint, the Mobile Integrative Navigation Team, Bruce Murray. I live out, just out in the, in the urban growth boundary, just off of Demeray and Redwood Highway, but not in the city. I looked at this from the standpoint of, of the health concerns and whether it'll make it easier or harder to deliver physical health, mental health, substance use help to the people that we're trying to serve. We want them out of the parks. We are trying to, and we've gotten dozens out of parks into safer settings, and we just ask for patience with Mint and with our organization as we're building up and we hope to help with housing, but we have a long way to go. When I look at what the resources are, and I understand this is going to create extra staffing problems, you're talking about porta potties, wash stations, trash, and security. Porta potties does, excuse me, wash stations does not mean that is drinkable water. That is not what a wash station is. It is for external use only of water and soap. That is not drinkable water. There is nothing in this ordinance about drinkable water for people that are living ninety-six degrees, smoke out of control tonight, no fresh water. Please look at that, please. Also, there's a significant error on page ten when it talks about they checked with rogue retreat for what they're doing with their facilities, and it says they have two toilets. That is wrong. They have two toilet trailers. And I heard from Sam Engel today, who said there was a misunderstanding. We have two restroom trailers, which contain a total of six plum toilets, four showers, laundry facilities, and three porta potties, one ADA. In other words, we have nine toilets, not two, of various types, which serve approximately one hundred and fifty people. We need to know how many are going to be going to these sites and what is necessary to provide for their safety. Please be kind.
I'm Brian Weldon, live in the county. I'm a member of Park Watch, and we have discussed a lot of these lots in our meetings. Number one, Riverside West. We are one hundred percent against Riverside West, even with a fence around it, because all you're going to do is have those homeless people coming over to Riverside East every single day and more than likely at night. They're going to be continuing to use the gazebos, everything there is at Riverside East. That's number one. The lot behind the firehouse by Baker, East Park, I'm not too thrilled about that one because you're going to have the same problem of everybody just every single day coming back over to Baker and walking down the street to Parkway or Parkside East. And number three, lack of law enforcement. Keeping these homeless from coming back daily, hourly, I think, is going to be a nightmare. We would like to have a private meeting with Chief Hensman like we did a year ago about how can we help? PATH wanted to help us, I don't know, Mint will, but Park Watch would be more than happy to volunteer our time to help whatever services our chief needs. We understand that there's a great deal of, of law enforcement that we need more of to properly deal with this problem. Concierge, I know they're expensive, but they could help monitor each one of these lots and our city parks to let the chief know the minute things are being violated. Other than that, that's about all I have. Thank you very much.
Rick Edwards, I'm a city resident. I live adjacent to Morrison Park. I walk the park every day. I have for three years. I've seen some improvement, but pretty much it's consistent all the time. My main concern is the parking during the day. We can have as many as twenty cars in the parking lot during the day, and they seem to conduct a lot of their business during the day. Does this address that concern? I also, do I understand with the state ordinance that if a guy doesn't want to move, he can say no and you give him seventy-two hours to be removed? Is that correct? So you're just, the people who are, would like to move are going to, but the ones who don't won't, correct? Because it'll be the same as it is now. Am I correct in that, sir?
Sorry, this is just a one-way public comment.
Okay, I'm sorry. Maybe you can address that later. Other than that, I want to thank you guys for working as hard as you can. I know you work more hours than any of us can imagine trying to facilitate us and make us a happier and happier community. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Steve Schooler. I'm from Grants Pass. My job here today is to plead to the council members of what's happening here at our city. I don't think the council members have had the opportunity, since this has been pretty much expedited to make this thing happen, to ever been, have they ever been to the actual locations to see exactly what the impact is to the rest of the community that are going to have it there. All I can talk about for me would be the fire station, Baker Park area right there. I happen to live right across the street from the, on the river from it. I've been dealing with the Baker Park overflow for four years now. I see people bathing in the river. I see people devocating in the river. I've seen, I've seen people die in the, in the field right across from the fire station. Somebody caught themselves on fire. I see this happen every day, dogs barking, people yelling and screaming in my house every day. Now that's at Baker Park. Now you're going to put it right in front of my house behind my, in my backyard. I can sit in my backyard and watch them. So I've paid all my money to have a riverfront property. Now you guys are going to provide it, a riverfront property for them for free. The thing is, it's going to make my house, my property, completely worthless if you put your house, your property, your encampment, your encampment right there. That's my biggest concern for me and my other, the other people in my community right there, is it will make, make our whole place completely worthless. And I don't know if you guys have looked at the other parks, other areas, and stayed there overnight during the day and watched what's happening every day. It looks good for me, you guys sit, you look at the papers, you look at the things on the screen. I saw the screen that showed my area right there. Didn't show my house. It showed the river, but right across would be me sitting there waving at them right now. That's where I'm at.
Hi, my name's Deb Harpster. I live in the county. One of my frustrations is that I think we're not talking about human beings. They're not they's, they're not them's. They are human beings. The perception exists that homelessness occurs primarily as a matter of choice or due to poor behavior on the part of the individual who is homeless. The reality is that there is a growing number of people whose income has not kept up with the cost of housing, which continues to rise. the cost of housing, which continues to rise as vacancy rates shrink. We all know there's not enough housing. Homelessness is not a direct result of addiction and mental illness. It's not having a place to live in addition to suffering from addiction or mental illness, which contributes to the severity of those conditions, but does not cause homelessness. Not having a place to live in addition, oh, I said that. No, I didn't. Not having a place to live in addition to suffering from addiction and mental illness contributes to this, okay. The cause of homelessness in GP and in numerous, so many places, is not having enough housing. Let's create spaces where people can rest, including especially the whole community, where it's not a jail, it's not some field of dirt or filled with inhuman conditions, but allows the safety of the occupants as well as all of us who live here. Security, cleanliness and food made available. Rogue Retreat has created models. All we have to do is not invent the wheel, but take our cue from, from that. Please, please put Grants Pass back on the map, back into focus by the country and create places for people to live. Thanks.
Hello, my name's Brock, Grants Pass resident. As our last speaker was just saying, you know, the problem in the parks wasn't the homeless and the tents, it was the drugs and the crime. Okay, and that's what we're dealing with. And that's what we're still going to be dealing with as we move forward. Two things, one is the car camping. A lot of people are getting cheap cars instead of tents. They're all over the place. If you visit Riverside Park East at nighttime, they're all out there having parties till well into the night. I know because I'm across the street. So we need to consider the cars with the tents and with everything that's going on. The other thing is the Riverside West parking, our camping spot. We disagree with that because of the overflow. Because if you have a camp there, people are going to keep, continue to go to Riverside East using the bathrooms and the gazebo and, and now they're, this is spillover. I don't, I know I've done this before, but I'm going to do it again. We just picked this up last weekend at All Sports Park on the other side of the bridge. There's no camping on that side, but there is in the bushes if you follow the trails down. We found a loaded needle under a blanket, ready to go. I don't know what was in it, but usually it's just blood. So this is what we're finding with overflow and this is what we're going to keep finding in Riverside East if Riverside West stays open. Okay, it's not the homeless people. We want to help them, but we need these drugs out of the parks. Every park I go to, if I look, I know where to look now and I can find needles and pipes and all this crap everywhere in every single park. So consider the cars, consider the drugs. April 1st is coming up. Chief's been doing a great job, keeps us informed, but we need to work together as a community and stamp out the drugs, okay? Thank you.
Hi, my name's Shoney Nelson. And as I always start out, I'm a dad. That's everything to me. I've got a four-year-old son, five-year-old daughter. Last night, I had someone knock on my door because I live over by the Granite Hill area, if you know where that's at. My concern is this. As you push them in places from the city, which yeah, I want them out of parks because that's for my kids. I took my kids recently to a church. In that church, they have a ship and in that ship, my kids were playing. They went to the front of the ship in a compartment there and both my kids grabbed their nose. Oh my gosh, at first I thought it was kind of cute until I asked my kids, what's up? And they said, there's something gross in there. We go over there and there was literally a bag of human shit and urine. Now when I put a video like this about my son and a 32-ounce Big Gulp, I had people saying, oh, he's got to be full of shit. Well, this video, you know, has my kids literally grabbing their nose and et cetera. Now back to the other, the devil's side area and my concern there. You have people out on federal land now, living by the train tracks. 11 o'clock this morning, I had one of them come up to me and he says, I need you now when I went to my door to call 911. Someone's got a gun on my friend. We as parents want to protect our kids. That's where we're at. In Grants Pass, we want to be protected because that falls to you. Now, if that doesn't fall to you, then please do me a favor. Tell us how we protect our children. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Dell Aldrich, city resident, grandfather of one and five boys raised in this town. Riverside Park was our beautiful, that's the reason I came to this town, Riverside Park. I did seven scotaramas out there. I had a day, Kids' Day in the park. Well, the day before the Kids' Day in the park, we were out there clearing the parking lot because there were car campers there. And as they were pulling out, we're finding needles and cats. These car cameras are taking over all the parks. Cameras, we talked about that before, that was wonderful. Would you do me a favor? You can't watch it. Put it on public and let us watch it for you. That's what we're here for. We'll help you out. I think that's a great idea. Just put it out for the public, live viewing of our beautiful area. The, the Kids' Day in the park was like, it was just a phenomenal day, but just to the, even to this day, we had people walking up, stoned as can be, from Riverside West. Riverside West does not need to be, that's a park. You promised us no parks and Park Watch wants nobody in any parks. They migrate and go down there and drive through the thing about 3 o'clock. You'll see 20 or 30 people laying along the river, hidden down below. So our great tourist jet boat people see these people sitting there enjoying getting high. When we walked through Riverside, the one side, we found three needles, not hidden out in the open, right? Out in the open. Sorry. And that's got to stop. You can't, Riverside West, you got, you got Parker's Place right up there, Mint, great. Why do you got to have, take one of our parks? That park does not need to be on the list. You've got plenty of any other areas to handle it. I don't know what else to say, but please, thank you for all your hard work. Chief, I know you're doing your best you can and we're going to continue to report any kind of violation in the park through Park Watch and we can reach out to help you.
Victor Zaitsev, Grants Pass. I've emailed you all a copy of this so you have it. I think we would all agree that if you are unhoused, the first most basic thing you need is shelter from the elements. After that, as sleep is an unavoidable biological necessity, you need a place to do that safely without a threat to your life and health. The top mission of the government is to provide for the life, health and safety of its citizens. Beyond that, our modern society, in order to work and function, you need number one to have identification, but if you're sleeping unprotected on the street, how do you keep your papers and ID safe? Next, how can you apply for services and be tracked for contact or get a job without an address or even a place to receive mail and parcels? After that, how can you do a job if you have nowhere to keep even important papers and simple belongings safe while you're away? So I have an idea for a possible solution. I call it a community resource recovery center. It is loosely based on the Habitat for Humanity restores, resource model. I would propose the use of the city-owned Merlin landfill site as a reasonable location. It is not good for much else. Initially, the area could be fenced and shipping containers could be set for shelter units in two rows with sanitary facilities and secure storage lockers in the third row between them. A 40-foot container could contain four 10-by-8 lockable shelter units cut into each container. The third row would, the three rows could be under a fabric clamshell cover like what you see at the pipeline company along I-5 near Gold Hill. That would provide shelter to the containers and the people from sun and rain. This would be a semi-permanent structure with the ability to adjust any settling of the site. Persons there could engage in recovery and recycling and repursuing efforts using items delivered for disposal, drop-offs and donations of goods and materials from the public and businesses as well could also be accepted. Access to the facility would be earned through a combination of need, ability to pay, sweat, equity, work and behavior-based point system, allowing those who want to work their way up the chance to do so. Thank you.
Mike Pelfrey, city of Grants Pass. In watching the earlier presentation, one of the things that struck me is the term "state-created danger." Well, the state created all of this danger. This state, which is primarily a Democrat state, so please remember that in November because unfortunately, our state is not your and I best friend. They created this problem. Now it's stuck in the hands of towns like Grants Pass to deal with it. I am not in favor of any camp. I know you're going to have to do something, but you know, I traveled, I've traveled around this state. I've been over to Florence and I was just over in Brookings. I don't see any city-sponsored camps over there, not a one. So how is it that they don't have these campgrounds, but yet we are talking about this as we speak? I don't want them in our parks, but I also don't want to have something that's going to create more of what we already have. And that's exactly, five campgrounds is an absolute crazy idea. At the least, and again, I'm not for any, but at the least, maybe one or two, and I would like to see that go down to zero. There shouldn't be a campground. You know what's not happening in states like Idaho or in other states across our country that are not run by Democrats? You know what it is? They don't have city council meetings that are taking up their entire time discussing places to put homeless people because their states are run properly and they don't have these problems. So I hope you guys will remember that, but ultimately, we need to get to a point where we have no homeless camps whatsoever. All we're doing is enabling these people and we're not helping them, we're hurting them. If they want to go somewhere like Rogue Retreat, there are bus services down to Medford. They can go to Rogue Retreat. We don't need a campground like that here. Thank you.
Hi, David Dapper, city resident. And thank you for ideas. I wonder if you could use more of that water treatment plant property for the time being, but I recently sent you all an email about some lady with her junk hanging out, her butt hanging out her pants, coming up to my door with a hatchet when my wife was there and trying to get in our house and ask her to let her in and use the phone. No. Did you, did you guys watch that email I sent you? That video? This is 80% of what is living in the park by me. This is 80% of what's out there. This is reality. There's 20% that really, we need to find a way to get out, but 80% of them are just choosing, it's a replay of the hippie thing. Drop out, do dope and forget everybody else, just get your next fix. And is there a way we can close our parks at the curfew times? A chain between two concrete posts to actually have the car campers leave the parks so the drug dealing slows down at night? That would help. Come by Tussing Park at night, you know, around 11, 12 o'clock. The dealers are coming in and out of there all night long. This isn't a fairy tales and zebras type, unicorns type of story out there. This is, there's an ugly side to what's going on out there too. Thank you.
On the 26th of this month, Fruitdale Elementary School will be back in for the school year. So I was telling my son, they are trying to change things, they're trying to do things. He goes, so are we going to have less tents we can see from the cafeteria, Mom? I said, I don't know, baby. I don't know what's going to happen. I don't understand why, if the sign has hours out there, why camping is allowed next to a school. I know the injunction, the injunction, the injunction. Come on, guys. These are our kids. And I'm really tired as a law-abiding, tax-paying citizen who pays by registration to be behind a car at a stoplight with, with 2020 tags from a different state. These are a lot of the car campers out there. Not all of them, not all of them. It's a big chunk. I don't, I don't feel a lot of this problem that homeless are Grants Pass natives or even Oregonian natives. And it's going to be real interesting once September 1st comes up to see how many hopefully beat feet and leave. When we had our Kids' Day, I had the 62-year-old I know come up to me and said, hey, Cat, how much longer do we have until they're going to kick us out? I said, I don't know. They don't know. And, and she was born and raised in Oregon. She's one of the few that I can say that I'm aware of that is a native. And she's living in the park trying to find a place. The car camping, the camping around the schools, please, you guys, there's, there's so much more involved in this than just tonight. Please.
Helen Cruz, city of Grants Pass resident. I'm here to address a couple of things. For one, I'd like the council to maybe take a listen to this and this is an incident that happened last night at Riverside Park. Brock Virgin was harassing a mother of two, threatening firearms. Okay? This is not okay. They call themselves Park Watch. I see nothing but vigilantes. You guys think that the homeless are bad? What about this Park Watch group? What about them? This mother was doing nothing wrong but making dinner for her kids. And because of the fact that she's homeless and doesn't want to be intimidated or bullied or harassed, she doesn't make a report. Is that okay? Everybody wants to sit up here and talk about where they should go or how many times they should move. How about give them a home? How hard is that? A lot of these people are over here because of no circumstances, that was their fault. There is no housing in this community. There is no shelter in this community. The only way to solve any kind of issue here is to start building homes. You guys have so much money, but you want to put it on an $11 million swimming pool? Are you kidding me? How is that going to make it? They can't sleep in a damn swimming pool. Put some damn housing up.
Julie Thomas, county resident, Colonial Valley. I just want to commend, I know it's a tough night, but I want to commend all of you for making such huge progress and I feel like you've really listened to what the community said about what's working and what's not working. And so I really want to say thank you, thank you, thank you. And I know we're a long way from perfect, but no community is. I do have a couple of quick recommendations or thoughts for the city manager especially. You guys are not alone in this. There are so many great nonprofits that are daily getting people into treatment, daily getting people into housing, daily getting people the help that they need, the hand up, not the handout. And all of us are willing to help, all the nonprofits that we work with are willing to help. And I think they can also help manage the site, whether it's one site or more sites, they can help manage. So one of the things that's working in Rogue Retreat crossings is that they have 24/7 case management. They have the nonprofits going right there. They have clients right there. They're meeting those needs on a regular basis to get people moving to a better place. And so you've got a lot of that. You also have an excellent security company that's providing 24/7 armed security vehicle patrols already. Add the site or extra sites, they can handle all the low-level stuff so that PD isn't the number one interactor of, of situations where it needs attention. So you do have a lot of resources. It feels a little scary right now because we haven't done this before, but we have to do something and a lot is really working well. We just need to work together in every capacity. I don't know how, we have an updated community resource list of all of our local nonprofits who are doing great work. I'd love for them and everyone to be able to come to the table and say, this is what we can do. This is what we can do. We can provide navigation services. We can help pull people out of these locations. We can meet them one-on-one. We can help with mobility issues. The only other thing is, the, one of the things is the visual barrier on the fence and I know you didn't get a quote for that, but the visual thing is a big deal. And whether it's real or not, people get really scared when they see this kind of stuff, so the visual barrier is probably a good idea. Thank you for your time.
I have a hard time standing. I didn't know if I was going to be able to speak, but my name is Gregory Cure. I'm a longtime resident of Grants Pass. I've lived here over 50 years. I've also somewhat helped as I've lived along with some. I'm a born-again Christian. I love the Lord with all my heart and I believe I have a divine plan from Him that will solve the homeless problem. will solve the homeless problem and also the problem against our citizens. I don't know if it would be, I just don't know where to go from here, but I want you to, I wasn't going to do this, and this is very hard for me. I used to have a home up here on Washington Boulevard. Pretty nice insurance business, made really good money, had a couple apartments. But last week, or last month, excuse me, was the first time I ever saw a deficit in my income at 71. Deficit meaning $23 overdrawn in my bank, US Bank, did not charge me any fees for that check because I didn't have the money, other than bogs and cans. I own an RV. I rent a space where half my income goes to the rent. And by the grace of God, I should be homeless by this time, but I'm on the threshold of being homeless. I'm not a drug addict. I'm a human being. I love people. I would lay my life down for every one of you if you were in trouble.
Sir, can you speak to the council?
Okay. And I'm done. I'd like to talk to the council or anybody on this council about the plan that I have and get in touch with somebody I can talk with about that plan. Sorry for the overtime.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening, city leadership. My name is Mike Slowdamer. It's been quite a week of emotions just going through everything, and I thought, as we're looking at this, let me reach out to city council, the mayor, city manager, and the response I've had has been incredible. I'll share more of that in public comment. But I want to start with two things. The number three, that's my ward. I've mentioned that a few times. And something called NIMBY, not in my backyard. And I'm sad to report that my ward, three, has had a failure in leadership, to the point I've been called derogatory names, NIMBY Mike. I have been called that. So I thought, you know what? I'm going to walk out and see what my neighborhood looks like. I spent 10 hours this past weekend in triple-digit heat knocking on any door within 300 yards of the Parkway Fire Station. Knocked on 131 doors. I talked to the people. Don't know if Ward Three leadership did. I did. I knocked on the fire station. Did Ward Three leadership talk to firefighters? I did. NIMBY Mike is a deflection, and we see it at the national level where people are called disparaging names, to remove the fact that 107 of my neighbors signed a petition saying, we're not in favor of having that homeless camp behind the fire station. In addition, the rest home, there's another 54 staff and 85 residents that are not in favor. An online petition at 288 people. I represent right now 533 people. Write that number down. 533 that are saying, please, don't do this. I need Wards One, Two, and Four to step up. Listen to what Ward Three is saying because we've had a failure in leadership, and I need Wards One, Two, and Four to fix that. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wanting to speak during public comment tonight? All right, we'll close the comment. Thank you all for being here and turn it back to council. DJ.
Yeah, there've been a couple of comments about car camping and those kind of things and concerns about, you know, vehicles and public lands. Can you elaborate on that for the crowd, please, Aaron?
Sure, it could be a tag team between the chief and I, but we have already on the books in our codes the ability to enforce parking standards. And so when we were addressing this with legal counsel, we felt as though we are good from that standpoint. The parks are closed at night, the parking lots are closed at night. We will be able to have those cars move on. And so, and the slight chance that we do find that they're not wanting to accommodate that or something along those lines, it would be, we would need to do the same thing as we would with an individual that has provided camp materials in one of those parks, there would still be a notice that would likely be required. But in discussions with legal counsel, we believe that at this time, there is not a need for us to develop any kind of parking enforcement into this code.
To answer the question, to continue the conversation, there's a lot of other enforcement ability that we will be doing. We just have to be patient and follow direction from council at this particular moment. However, September 1, it's going to be a crime again to be in possession of a controlled substance, and you can be guaranteed people will be arrested for possession of controlled substance. But also, too, people will receive citations, and then people will also be deflected to a resource. People that might be technically car camping also have a right to be in the parks during the day, and there's not a thing I can do about it. People have a constitutional right to utilize public spaces. So we have to navigate enforcement, constitutional rights, what's allowable and what's not, and also utilize discretion in how we do it. We've all been challenged over several years on how do we do this, and we've walked on eggshells so we don't make things worse. And that was never any, we never wanted to go in that direction nor will we. We've always wanted to do what's in the best interest for this community. And managing risk is a huge part of that. I manage risk on the regular. And this is just a drop of water in the bucket of law enforcement's duties on the day-to-day. We're incredibly busy, but we're not forgetting what is available to us with resources, meaning what laws, what violations can we utilize to make our parks, make our streets, make our community better, and we will do that. But we have to be very cautious that people can utilize those parks, so we're not going to be doing anything to impact that. So hopefully that elaborated on that for you.
I also wanted to address one more thing in talking about Riverside West, mentioning that that will just kind of bleed over into Riverside. We all need to remember that this is about camping and where people can set up camps. These are members of our community. They are allowed to visit our public lands, whereas illegal behavior is still illegal. We can't and are unwilling to prohibit use of public land, so they are allowed to use those public lands during the time that anybody can use the public lands. Everybody in this room and everybody in this community, they have those same rights. So I just wanted to bring that to the, bring that to the conversation.
Rob.
That's a good point, DJ. Thank you. I have a question, I guess, for the chief. So if somebody right now were to park illegally in a fire lane, let's say the alley between Sixth and G, you know, or fire trucks and emergency vehicles would have to go through, would the public safety, would you have the ability to tow that vehicle immediately?
Yes.
So how is that any different if someone was in a park that's closed after dark? I mean, do you assess that it's a homeless person by looking in the vehicle and figuring out there's camping gear in there? Or why can't that vehicle be towed immediately?
If I'm driving through Riverside Park at 12 o'clock at night and I don't see anybody in the car, I have no right to just tow that car. I have to appropriately tag that vehicle and give it notice. Emergency is very different than just seeing a vehicle parked in a parking lot.
Joel.
So I got a lot of different thoughts and took good notes and appreciate people saying what they needed to say. The toilet situation, nine toilets for 150 people. The point-in-time count for Grants Pass was 240. The number of campsites that was counted recently was, I'm rounding up, it was about 100. So I don't know how many people would be per campsite, but if you look at these number of sites and you look at least two bathrooms per site, it would be in the ballpark of the same ratio. What it doesn't have is water, which is a necessity of life. One of the things that strikes me is the places by the river. It's an economic thing. It's an ecological thing. I know people, especially in an urban environment, don't think about ecology very much. And I guess that's my background, so when I see that being abused, I don't think that these type of facilities should be adjacent to the river. As we work through this, there might have to be a step where they are temporarily and we monitor it and we get some other sites going. But I think we can do better than that. I don't think we need to keep those two sites by the river for the economics and the environment and the recreation. I think that's true. I think that's a fact. I think that's reality. And I like dealing in reality. The parking during the day, I don't think we're going to do anything about that because I think that's a legal right. And hopefully, people do use the parks during the day. The 72-hour thing is state law. We're not going to do anything with that. When I looked at, I'm kind of a math nerd, and so when I looked at the number of tents, there was 100 existing camps. And if you gave each camp a space 20 by 20, that's 400 square feet per camp, and you multiply that times 100, that's 40,000 square feet, which is about one acre. Now, that would be pretty dense, so I increased it by 50% because that's what nerds do. And so it's an acre and a half. And then I look at the different sites that we have, and we exceed that. And as we monitor, that's why I think the monitoring plan is very important, because there'll be some sites maybe that are overcapacity or underserved, you know, where we need to collaborate even more with the nonprofits. And there'll be other sites that aren't being used at all. And so we're going to have to have that monitoring built into what we do, and we're going to have to have a session scheduled on our agenda review to review the results of that. And I would say, you know, like, at least two months after implementation, just to see, because, you know something? We don't know what's going to happen, and you don't either. And so I think that's a very important thing. Let me see. There were some other things. They talk about the lack of law enforcement, where we have our existing service levels. The concierge was, you know, that could be part of the monitoring if people are getting hurt camping in the parks or if citizens are being threatened. The grants and the nonprofits running campgrounds. I mentioned to a nonprofit person, the other nonprofit person, a person who works for a nonprofit. You have to excuse me, I'm not a sociologist or whatever they call those folks, but said, hey, why don't you get ready and put a proposal together for one of these sites? We don't have the operating expenses. Mint has done a great job of getting it out of the park to be consistent with that and trying to protect park values, and we applaud you for that. And this is going to take time. It's not going to happen tomorrow. So this is just an intermediate step. It's a good step. It's a positive step, hopefully for everybody. We're not going to get everything right, and we need to monitor it and we need to fix it as we go. And I really don't like, in the long run, stuff next to the river. I just don't like that.
Brian.
Thank you. I had a question about the water treatment plant site. When we were looking at the diagram earlier, the total site's about seven and a half acres, and the plan is calling for use of about 1.3 acres. Would it be possible for us to expand that to include some car camping at that site?
I think the short answer is yes, but I want to put a but on there. Brad would probably have something to say about it's not paved and we're not supposed to park and maneuver on unpaved areas. That being said, I know that we have allowed like a gravel, treated gravel treatment for storage areas, so that may be allowed. We don't have costs for any of that, but we could, it could be looked into. You just tell us what you would like us to do.
Okay. Thank you. That's the other side of this coin, is we have people camping in tents, and then we have, you know, honestly, probably just as many people in the city camping in cars, whether it's in the parks or on the street or wherever. And this plan doesn't do anything to alleviate that. I personally would be interested in looking into expanding the space of the water treatment site to help alleviate the other side of the coin that is car camping. So as other counselors speak, if you would like to give your opinion on that, that'd be great. I do think since one of our goals is to hopefully get individuals to go more towards the water treatment plant site as opposed to the other sites, I think at the minimum, having a water source on that site, you know, even if it's just a tank that gets refilled every once in a while for potable water, I think that that would be a good addition for that particular location. The concern about not enough toilets, I'm not sure if I, I don't know that I understand that we, this plan has enough toilets, but I would hope that staff uses some sort of metric to make sure that, you know, whether that's one toilet per 20 people or whatever that standard is, I think that we should have a standard that's being met so we don't find ourselves creating unsanitary conditions at one of these sites. And then, you know, I just want to address, you know, I'm a dad too, and I live really close to Gilbert Creek Park, and my daughter has been walking through Gilbert Creek Park to school for four years with this situation. So I don't want people to think that we are totally removed and we have no idea or we're not impacted by what's happening in the parks. Just a couple of weeks ago, I actually woke up to somebody trying to open my back door of my house. And I thought it was like maybe my mom or something, and I checked the video, and I was like, I don't know who that person is. And so I got, I got, you know, out of the house and I went and I found him, and it was a homeless person walking up to Gilbert Creek Park with a bunch of stuff in their arms, and I kind of ran after her and made sure she didn't have any of my stuff, but I'm right on the path there too. Like, I have homeless people walking by my house every day, so, you know, we're aware of what's happening in town. It's affecting us as well. So there's no perfect plan. We're just doing the best we can. No matter what we do, no matter where we cite these things, there's going to be people that are upset. This is a starting point. We plan to adjust. This is not set in stone. We're going to look at this in a couple of months, and we will make adjustments based on the data that comes in. So I just want to let you know, we're doing the best we can, and we're trying to solve this as much as possible.
Dwayne, and then Rob.
Yeah, I just wanted to get back to the, you know, tonight is, we're here to get the public back their parks. That's what the goal was. I think that is the goal, is to get them back their parks. You know, this all started, I wasn't even here when you were having that very first meeting about the parks and the slides and texting, and I was pretty mad because I was watching it from Milwaukee. But on July 21, I had my first email I sent to the, and these are my first four sites, you know, that was like Hillcrest, Beacon Park, Police Station, Water Treatment. Those were my, on July 21, those were my first... Those are my first emails that I sent to the rest of the council and said I wanted four sites, kind of spread them out a little bit. That's always been my initial place was four sites. You know, I just tell you, I've been to every park. I know I got accused tonight that I don't know anything, I've been anywhere. Well, you can thank me for cleaning Baker Park, Mike Slaughter maker many times, when you want to call me out. I was there last week with Rob. He sent you an email, so your complaints are invalid. I don't need to take a roster around. I know nobody wants these in their parks. Nobody. I don't need to go get his signatures. Nobody wants them in the parks. You're not telling me nothing I don't know. Nobody wants it near them. Nobody wants homeless people that are doing drugs near them. My friends that have a business two doors down from here don't want them when their car is in the driveway, that are parked there for two weeks with needles in their arms that I can see when I go to a men's meeting with them at six in the morning. They don't want them either. Everybody knows that. We don't want drug addicts in our town. That's not a secret. But we do. We have them here. So now we have to deal with them. So we're dealing with them in the best way we can. You know, we're talking about water. On Sunday, I'm driving by the bottle drop, doing my Sunday morning thing with my wife, and there's people jumping water out of water bottles. What do you think they're doing with the water bottles? They're cashing them in for drugs. I'm not a stupid idiot. I was a sheriff reserve deputy. I've been around. I worked for DHS. I know what people do. I'm not stupid. I know none of you are either. We know there's people doing bad stuff in this town. So when, I mean, I really get upset when people don't think, hey, we don't know what's going on. Rob's got a business. They're out there in front of his business. I mean, they're everywhere. I saw Joel walking with his wife this morning, like 7:40, when I was getting ready with my wife, and he's walking by Riverside Park. I'm pretty sure Joel knows and his wife know what homeless people are and what bad people are. I'm, you know, I'm sure we all know. So it's, it's, we don't need to be told that you don't want them in your area. We're trying to fix this as best we can. I don't want them either, but they're human beings. We've got to do something. The law does not allow us to bust them away. Not what we can do. I don't like HB 3115 or HB 3124 with seventy-two hours. I don't like it. I think it's ridiculous that you have to give seventy-two hours of somebody to move their stuff that shouldn't be there. I don't think that's, that's fair. I don't think it's fair to anybody in here. If you are breaking the law, we would tell you to move on and you move. But some people voted for that, state legislature, that it was okay. And then there's other people that want to spend taxpayer dollars. When they say grants, those are taxpayer dollars. There's no such thing as grants that are free. Someone went to work today, someone paid their taxes, and then the government gives those out. Those are hardworking people's money. We know that. So there's, when you say grants, that's, you might also change the word to taxpayer. Someone's sweat equity went into paying that today. We know all this stuff. We're trying to do our best. We know we don't have a lot of money. I wish there wasn't even drugs. It destroys families. I mean, you don't have to be a rock. Brock back there, I was there when, I watched this video with his kid in the park. He has a home, but doesn't want to stop doing drugs. We heard him say that story here. I know other people in this audience that have had kids that do drugs. Their family doesn't want them in their house no more because they do drugs. I have a brother-in-law that did drugs for twenty years. Guess what? If you're going to do drugs, I don't want you in my house either. Drugs destroy lives. And then there's some good people, and I think there is some groups out here that are trying to do some good stuff. You know, maybe I don't agree with everything they're doing, but, you know, I say, hey, if they're doing it, I don't have to be part of it, but they're not bothering me, you know? Really not. I mean, that's why I look at some of this stuff as, it's not bothering me. Their little thing by Parkers that I know Tom for my whole life for like, they're not bothering me. If they want to do this stuff, more power to them. I just look at these things just rationally and common sense. They have a right to do these things. So there's a lot of people pointing fingers. I think the best thing is for us to define some kind of compromise tonight, if it's three sites or four sites or whatever it is, and then we keep adjusting. You know what I'm saying? This is not a perfect set in stone plan tonight. I mean, I know people in here that I'm really close to that are probably going to disagree with me, you know? But we're trying to do the best thing possible so people's kids can go to the park, enjoy their life, their homes are not getting destroyed. September 1st, I pray every day that, you know, that the House Bill 4002 works in Josephine County, because it ain't very far, as you can see in other counties, it's not going to work. It's already not going to work. There's counties not going to enforce it. I'm hoping that our police chief is arresting, citing, deflection, and it's actually working in the best possible way. You know, no one wants people to be on drugs. I just don't see that, anybody wishes that on anybody. So I don't know what we're going to do here, but I'm ready to discuss the sites we can do. So, thank you.
Rob, and then Brian, and then Joel.
Yeah, Dwayne, I appreciate everything that you just said. And I want to just, I think, there's so many, there's been so much, too many concerns spoken tonight, and almost all of them are, I would probably agree with. But there's one thing that I want to try to put in perspective or remind everybody of, is that compared to where we were in, say, May or early June of 2023, by the time we're done here tonight, I'm hoping, or at least what we're proposing, is about a ninety-five percent reduction in allowable park camping space from where we were in May or June of just a year ago, a little more than a year ago. I mean, a ninety-five percent reduction. We're talking about possibly approving a small part, a very small part, probably less than, less than half an acre total of two parks. Last year, we had, what, seventeen full parks, including all of Riverside, were full of tents. So that's really, and I'm not, I'm not looking for a pat on the back at all for this, but that's how far we've come. We've got like a ninety-five percent reduction in our main, in our main goal, and what it's been our main complaint from most of the citizens is getting our parks back. We're ninety-five percent, we're hopefully, after tonight, going to be ninety-five percent of the way there. So to me, that's, I need to, we need to put that in perspective, number one. You know, number two, as Dwayne said, and as I think probably everyone said, we're not looking at permanent solutions tonight because we're not looking at pouring any foundations and building, you know, making buildings and so on and so forth. I mean, according to Chief Hensman, last, at our last meeting, our last workshop, since the Supreme Court ruling, we've, we appear to have had a reduction in, certainly in the number of tents that have been posted and probably homeless in town. So that's already, already happened. I mean, when September 1st comes and Measure 110 is drastically adjusted, I believe that we're going to have less people, less homeless people in the entire state and also in Grants Pass to some degree. It's not going to encourage more people to come if the drug laws are tougher. It's going to encourage people to potentially either seek help, which would be a great solution, or go somewhere else. So, you know, I think by this time next year, we're going to have a good idea of actually where we're at, but we're going to be less than we were. Hopefully, we're going to have probably ninety-five percent of our park space likely to be available for people to use for the appropriate purposes. And I understand that, you know, one member of the public tonight is upset about the word NIMBY being used with his name, and I get it, but if you really heard tonight and listened, and I'm not saying this to put anyone down, we also had NIMBY Aaron and we had NIMBY Warren and we had NIMBY everybody, right? Nobody wants this problem next door to where they work or where their employees work or where, you know, they live. But the bottom line is, and we've known this for a long time, that the homeless people, whether they are drug users or not drug users or whatever, they're not disappearing. So they've got to go somewhere, and we have to find a decent place or reasonably objective place to try to put them. And I think that the idea of trying to get some car camping spot at the water treatment plant temporarily, I think, needs to be seriously considered by council, even if we don't get it all together tonight to do that. I think we need to do that probably at our next meeting. But I'd really like to focus on the fact that for every reason that everyone has said tonight that this, what we're talking about tonight is not perfect, and I'm going to agree with virtually all of that, it's about a ninety-five percent improvement or potential improvement if we can enforce it, that's if we can enforce it, over what we had a year ago. So hopefully, we can move forward with that in mind.
Brian, and then Joel.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of NIMBYs, although I think at least Dwayne can vouch that I'm not a NIMBY because I was completely okay with the Hillcrest site, which is two blocks from my house. So I was just going to riff off that. But what I was actually going to say is I was going to make a motion because there's two parts to this. There's the ordinance, and then there's the second part that we're going to talk a little bit more about the actual locations and the details. So I'm going to make a motion for the easy part and get that out of the way and move that we adopt the ordinance, repealing Grants Pass municipal code section 6.46.090 camping in parks and section 5.57.220 criminal trespass on city property, amending section 5.61.010 definitions, amending section 5.61.030 camping prohibited, amending section 5.61.050 removal of campsite on city property, amending section 5.61.060 disposition and release of personal property, and amending section 5.61.070 mitigation and penalties and declaring an emergency and have it read by title only first reading.
Is there a second? Second by Vanessa. Any discussion on the motion? Joel, you were up first if you wanted to discuss.
Well, I was going to address the second.
The locations?
Yeah.
Okay, let's hang on to that for a bit. Anybody want to discuss the ordinance here? All right. Without further discussion, Brian, you made the motion to adopt the ordinance. How do you vote?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
An ordinance of the council of the city of Grants Pass, repealing Grants Pass municipal code section 6.46.090 camping in parks, repealing section 5.57.220 criminal trespass on city property, amending section 5.61.010 definitions, amending section 5.61.030 camping prohibited, amending section 5.61.050 removal of camp, removal of campsite on public property, amending section 5.61.060 disposition and release of personal property, and amending section 5.61.070 mitigation and penalties and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. And because the vote was unanimous, ordinances do require a second vote, but Rob, go ahead.
The same motion, same ordinance, second reading.
Thank you. Is there a second? Vanessa, thank you. Any discussion on that? All right, let's go ahead and vote on the second reading. Rob, how do you vote?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
D.J.?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
An ordinance of the council of the city of Grants Pass, repealing Grants Pass municipal code section 6.46.090 camping in parks, repealing section 5.57.220 criminal trespass on city property, amending section 5.61.010 definitions, amending 5.61.030 camping prohibited, amending section 5.61.050 removal of campsite on public property, amending section 5.61.060 disposition and release of personal property, and amending 5.61.070 mitigation and penalties and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. And so because that was an emergency, it will pass as soon as I sign it, and then it will go into effect as soon as the injunction is lifted. Discussion now, Joel, on locations.
So I don't have a solution for this, but I just wanted to make the observation that the car parking, there's been some seasonal businesses, particularly the marijuana farms with the bud picking, where they've sent their people in or the people that are coming into the area to pick buds. They come in and they park in the parks, they get free stuff, and then they get a nice place to stay with their car. And during the day, they go out and work at the plantation, and I don't feel that's an appropriate role for the city to play, but I don't know how to, how to do that from the people that are, have legitimate needs. So anyway, I just wanted to bring that up for everybody's attention and that, so what you, what we see in the past is some increase in car parking when it comes to be marijuana harvest season. Now, with the, with the economics of marijuana farming, maybe that's not going to be as great this year. I don't know. Anyway, I wanted to get back to the specifics of the second measure and location. It looks like if we get two acres with the existing camps, we got enough space. Not that, not that we want to use that or go strictly by that. We need to monitor that. But the first two priorities I see for development are the future water treatment plant site and the parks, the, excuse me, the 704 Northwest Sixth Street, from my perspective. The other two could be developed. They're by the riparian area, which bothers me a little bit. The other thing is that there may be some other locations that become available, and we could monitor as we implement those first two, and we have those other two that can come online. We can also monitor what the use is on those two, and then, and if we have some more sites come online, maybe that's even more socially acceptable and serviceable for not only a place for people to camp, but for a nonprofit to come in later and service people, we would do that. And I would propose as part of that, that we would also have on the, on the agenda, as soon as we get at least those two first priority sites up and operational, that a month from then, we have another agenda. Put along the agenda to discuss it with monitoring and see how things are going. That would, if it was my, my company, that's what I would do.
Brian?
With regards to the sites, you know, legal counsel was recommending that we do twelve sites. Counsel has, you know, we were at five, and now it looks like we're, I think we're at four. I'm a little uncomfortable going much lower than that out of the gate. I think I'm okay for now with the four sites. There's one in each ward, so, you know, there's no ward that is, has an undue burden. It's spread amongst the wards. It's spread out amongst the city, and I do, again, I'll just reiterate, I think we do need to have potable water at the water treatment plant site. And I would like to explore potentially adding car camping to that site to mitigate that issue in the community as we're doing enforcement in the parks.
Vanessa?
I did want to circle back. I don't want to reiterate too much of what has already been said, but I want to circle back to, there was a concern from staff in terms of the amount of people per site to manage, and I would just like to highlight for counsel that if there was a shelter in our community, there would be less people occupying these public spaces, and they more than likely would be opting for the use of a shelter, reducing the burden on the city to manage those people. Just want to highlight that. I know that's something that a few of us have been advocating for, for a few years, so I think it's important to keep bringing that up. I know that these sites aren't perfect. There never will be a perfect site, unfortunately. It's the reality that we live in, and this is being adopted via resolution for the sense that it is flexible and it can be amended. I do support revisiting this in the near future and seeing how this new situation is rolling out and how the reality is playing out. I do support the need for having a minimum of at least four sites, like Counselor DeLaGrange said, out of the gate. We know that homelessness is a complex issue. It's a human issue, therefore, it's inherently complex. I think this evening, drug use has really dominated the conversation for homelessness, but we know that we have a lot of unhoused seniors, we have students that are unhoused, accommodate the needs of those that do need somewhere to camp. I support the idea also of having drinkable water at the water treatment plant. That really is the reason for us having the 96 hours at that site is to incentivize people to utilize that space. I think that that would not only be necessary in terms of providing wash stations and also sanitation, but it also helps incentivize the use of that area. I also support the idea of car campers. We do know that that is a growing use of rest, of habitat in our community. And so I think that we do need to continue that discussion. I don't know that we'll necessarily nail something down tonight, but I think that that is missing from this discussion. So I look forward to that in the near future.
DJ?
I'm inclined to accept staff's recommendation for not recommending Hillcrest. I think they make a really good, a really good case for that. Police expansion as well, there's some work to be done on there, but the same argument is rot, right? And then you can easily expand that to Parkway. They all have great concerns from a public safety perspective. That leaves me with six and eight Riverside West Water Treatment Plant in Baker. I'm not willing at this time to entertain car camping or potable water on the site.
Rob?
Yeah, I'm, I agree that the Hillcrest, for the, for the case made by staff, the Hillcrest should probably be eliminated from our consideration. You know, actually, you know, I believe our legal counsel originally actually called for 14 of our parks. It was 14. Four, we were gonna have Free and Clear, and 14, we're gonna be, still have campsites on them. Then the second round, staff and our legal team came back with roughly a split, I believe, of eight and eight or something like that. So, you know, counsel's come a long way with that. But, you know, with regards to the, the chief, chief's concern especially, and to a lesser degree to Aaron's concern about having a place next to the headquarters on Seventh Street be a homeless designated camping spot, to me, because of the proximity to headquarters, I would think that that's gonna be the least problematic spot. If I was a bad guy, I wouldn't wanna camp next to the police station. That's the last place I'd go.
If you were a bad guy.
But if I was, if I was a bad guy, you know?
Yeah, if you were a bad guy.
So, you know, and I, I understand your concern, especially with parked vehicles and things like that. But I would also say to some, to a lesser degree, temporarily, the six and eight spot would be probably the same, same thing. If I was a bad guy, I wouldn't necessarily wanna be next to the city government. But, so I would think that the people that might be pitching tents there would be probably the, some of the least threatening. But I could be wrong, it could be proven wrong. But I'm, I'm in favor of the, the four, the other four spots, and six and eight temporarily until the, the spot on Seventh, the house on Seventh is demolished. And I think that the, we have to do something with the car camping if we wanna hope to have them out of the park and off, off the streets. We've gotta come up with an alternative. Otherwise, they're gonna be in the parks or on the streets. So since we definitely don't want that, I think we have to consider coming back and looking at the water treatment plant. So that's where I'm at.
Rick?
I think we need to try and make the best of a difficult situation. I like the comments that Rob and other people have made. I think it's appropriate to try and distribute the load around the community with four sites. I'm not in favor of Hillcrest and water at the water treatment site would be appropriate. Thank you.
Brian?
Well, in the interest of keeping this moving, I'll make a motion and we'll see what happens. Actually, before I make a motion, Aaron, I'm sorry, I just had a question about, because in the resolution, it doesn't, it just talks about the locations, it doesn't talk about any of the services that we've been talking about. So how, how is that gonna play out with, you know, water at the water treatment plant, or looking into car camping, or like, I, I have a concern with the fencing here on that side with kids walking by to school every day. So how are we gonna address that?
Yeah. So I, I think you wanna keep the resolution just to the sites. If you want to specifically designate and mention or change in the resolution that it's what services will be provided, then, then that's okay. I would like to have some flexibility with regards to just taking comments or changes, so we don't have to change the resolution. If all of a sudden the fencing doesn't work in one location, we have to change the side, we have to change the whole resolution. My one concern about the car camping is I think it should be addressed separately, because the ordinance is, is, does not address car camping. I don't think the resolution or motion within this resolution should address car camping. It could be something that council asks staff to look into and provide you additional information at a workshop about car camping. And then if you're specifically designating water or something along those lines, I, I just want the caveat to be known again and reflect that what I put in the presentation, is whatever services that we provide, we need to be prepared to do it indefinitely. So if you provide water, say drinking water at one site, and that site closes, say, water treatment plant, you will need to come up with another site and provide water as a minimum level of service. So whatever levels of service that we get to, we need to be aware that that's what we need to look at doing if we have to change, change sites. So I would keep the resolution to what it is, which is site designation.
Okay, thank you. So I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution identifying allowable locations for camping in accordance with ordinance number 24-5910. Those four sites are the, I think we're all aware, the water treatment plant site, the Baker site, East Park Street site, and six and eight site. With the expectation that all four sites do have basic sanitation services, which include restroom, wash stations, and trash, and including potable water at the water treatment plant site, with the expectation that at a future meeting, we will have a discussion about adding car camping to that site with a decision to be determined later.
Okay. I just wanna clarify, first of all, you said Baker Park and you meant Riverside, because then you also said East Park. So the four locations are the written here, water treatment plant site, Riverside Park, East Park Street, and the six and eight site.
Yes, thank you.
And then the other thing is, so are you, in your motion, are you recommending an amendment that would include water at the water treatment plant site? Or are you wanting to pass the resolution as written and add direction to provide potable water?
The second thing you said.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying.
Is there a second? Seconded by Vanessa. Discussion on that motion. Rick?
So I'd just like, again, clarification of the four sites.
It's, it's as written on page 16 of the packet, or it's
Right.
Water Treatment Plant Site, the Riverside West, the East Park Street or Parkway Fire Station Site, and then the six and eight site.
Okay, thank you.
I have a logistical question about the motion, Joel. I'm a little confused, because the motion should be to adopt the resolution. If you're putting something like car camping and water, then we need to put language in the resolution that that's what we're going to do. So it is really two separate issues, I believe, unless you're wanting to actually change the resolution to say that we are going to provide a certain service to that. So I, I believe that if, if your desire, staff to look into car camping, to look into additional services, that's great, but I think it should be separate, and separate as an action for us to look into. The resolution should be adopted just for the sites, unless you're wanting to put those things in a resolution.
Brian?
I will adopt, amend my motion and restate that I move to adopt the resolution identifying allowable locations for camping in accordance with ordinance number 24-5910.
As written. Okay, seconded again by Vanessa. Discussion on that? Joel?
So again, this is a similar discussion to the water discussion. As we implement it, I think there's priorities in terms of the sites, and I think we need to stick with those priorities. It doesn't need to be part of the resolution. The other thing I think needs to be part of this is monitoring and putting it on our agenda so that two months from now, or two months from the time we implement it, that we reexamine where we're at and what changes we need to make. Now, that may run into some unneeded expense, but we don't know everything we need to know. So, so I, and I, I will vote for that with that understanding that we have those two sites that are priority. We can, we can identify all four sites, and that we have the monitoring meeting two months, or what, what is the appropriate time after implementation?
Dwayne?
I, I would, I would agree that this is not my favorite four sites, but I wanna see us back here and after it takes place in a couple months to evaluate goods, bads, whatever it is. I wanna hear, you know, from chief, what's working, what's, I mean, even the, what's here for Mint and everybody else, what's, what's working, what's not working. I think that's a valid thing to see. Are we having more situations at certain parks versus others? I think that's a valid concern the city's council should look at is, did we cause another problem? So I'm gonna vote for this, but knowing that this needs to be looked at again in a couple months to see what is working and what's not working. Thank you.
Rick?
I'll be in favor of this motion also with the idea we will be monitoring and looking at this in a few months to make sure it's working out as we are hoping it will. And then I think as we go down the road, there'll be other locations I think that could come online that we could consider, and to take that input at that time. Thank you.
Rob?
Yeah, I, when Joel's talking about monitoring, I mean, I have little doubt that we have a minimum 50 monitors in the room. We're gonna hear from them. There's no doubt, right? Aaron's, Aaron's already said that we're gonna hear back about how the costs are going and extra workload and so forth. I mean, we, we've already, we already know that monitoring's gonna happen. So I'm good with it, knowing that we've also got a little more work to do with regards to deciding if we wanna do anything with car camping, et cetera. But yeah, this is, this is a step along the road that I think is really positive, and we've got more steps to take, but we're gonna, we're gonna hear back for sure.
Joel?
And if we don't hear back, then it works perfectly. That probably won't happen.
Any further discussion on the motion? All right. The motion was to adopt the resolution as written in the packet, and Brian, you made the motion. How do you vote?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
DJ?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Oh, we don't need to read that one, it was just a resolution. I was waiting for you. Is there any further discussion on this topic right now? I know...
Yeah. What's the best way to address the finer details?
Yeah, I think if you wanna address, you've mentioned the water at the water treatment plant. Car camping sounds like council needs to give direction if you want staff to look into further solutions for that. And then I, I don't think we need to talk anymore about the review or follow-up process, 'cause we'll just do that. Dwayne?
I just have a question. We were told you can't park on the water treatment, but I'm gonna say every Memorial Weekend, right before, we have giant semis parked all over that parking lot. So what is the difference between them parking there and camping there, and this having to improve it?
That's, that's a great point. And those, they park there once and then they leave weeks later. The city's planning rules specifically prohibit maneuvering and where it's normal parking on gravel lots. I just gotta work with Brad. I know that there's a way around it, but I just, I don't wanna say, yes, it's, let's run and get it all done, but it is prohibited.
To, to answer council's questions, the best thing to do to, to be most efficient and effective would be for staff to work with the mayor and council presidents to schedule a future workshop, and we can provide you that information on what levels of service. Again, we can look at the costs. You can help provide direction on, on what level of service you're comfortable with at each one of those sites. And then we can also address the potential of car camping and the allowance of that.
Okay, that works for me. Thank you.
All right. Anything further on this topic right now? All right. Let's move on then to our general public comment. So this is an opportunity for the public to address the city council on the items that are not related to a council action item tonight. The intent is to provide information that is pertinent to the city's jurisdiction. Each speaker will be given two minutes to address the council as one body, not to individuals. At the conclusion of public comment, council will have an opportunity to respond. This meeting will proceed in an effective and courteous manner. Citizens and council members will be allowed to state their positions in an atmosphere free from slander, threats, or other personal attacks. Signs or placards, outbursts of applause, campaigning for public office, or other disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. And if you have a question regarding any government-provided service or a current city policy, please contact the city manager's office in an attempt to resolve the matter. And I have a paper here from Stephen Fitch. And so you can go first. I think all of the other papers that I had, people probably already spoke on their topic. I think Mike is waiting for a second, so let's have Mike Slowdemaker go next.
I'm just gonna email you guys with my demands. Have a good day.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, city leadership. My name's Mike Slowdemaker, and I still live in the city of Grants Pass. I wanna tell you what an amazing week this has been in terms of emotions up and down. A week ago, I emailed the 10 of city leadership, got emails back from most, very positive. I heard from the mayor, I heard from the city manager, many of you up here. I had people come to my house and stand on my deck and explain. The empathy I received was amazing. The detail was amazing. Brian, I'm giving you a pass because you've come over before and you've heard my concerns. But Rob, thank you. Joel, thank you. Rick, thank you.
I'm sorry, you can't do that.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah. All right. Well, those that responded, I want to thank. This didn't go the way that I had hoped, but I still support this city council because that's my duty as a citizen, right? I am going to call out one person because I was called out from behind the city council. And when I say derogatory, being called NIMBY Mike, it's disrespectful when a city councillor is doing that to other city council people. It's not just I'm NIMBY Mike, I'm being called that. I've got 533 people standing behind me, and you just offended them as well. I want to work with the city on this, but realize that out of my subdivision of 26 homes, this probably just caused over a $2 million disappearance in house value. I'll share that with you in two months when we find out what the feedback is. This probably cost me $150,000. That hurts. That's not why I moved here, and it's not why I bought a place on the river. We'll see where it goes. I have eyes on the homeless camp, and you better believe that we're gonna sit there and we're gonna watch, and we'll call it in, and we'll let you know when things are going wrong. I do appreciate you. I do wanna say that. Thank you.
Was there anyone else wanting to speak during public comment? Please step forward, state your name, let us know whether or not you live in the city.
Victor Zites of Grants Pass, I wanted to pick up on the proposal where I left off. Access to the facility would be earned through a combination of need, ability to pay, sweat equity, work, and behavior-based point system, allowing those who want to work their way up the chance to do so and eliminate the bad-behaving actors from the scene. Money from the waste haulers fund and landfill diversion grants could be some of the funding streams. Money could also be generated from a restore open to the public. This site would prepare, provide for a centralized location of outreach services. The site has excellent access to I-5. Bus service could also be provided to and from the facility several times a day, providing a way to get to work and health providers. An animal shelter could also be located there using available subsidized workforce. I could go on and on, as the possibilities are endless. Such a facility would certainly be a solution to accommodate the recent court ruling. I believe it would be a win-win-win for everyone and a good I believe it would be a win-win-win for everyone, and a good use of an otherwise mostly useless site. I'm sure there would be a lot of statements declaring, "We can't because," but I would rather, I would prefer to concentrate on asking, "How can we?" and move this idea forward. Thank you.
Again, my name is Greg Cure, and thank you all. I just wanted to thank you all for this, everybody, we're all subject to this, but I do have a solution to this problem, and I would like to talk to those that are in authority to at least share that. Not, you guys have already voted, I realize that, but I do have a bona fide, that, one, I believe that the homeless situation, unbeknownst to themselves or their fault, need to be separated from the public. They need to be separated, no, no designated places, but separated from the public enough to where those that want to get out of homelessness can receive services, and those that are drug addicts are criminals, and they're treated as such according to the law. My plan is humane, and my plan has everything to do with the citizenship too, with Grants Pass, including myself. I believe the danger that we're doing is we're not addressing the issue head-on, but we're addressing the issue kind of like, hey, we don't know what to do with this, so we're going to just pass it on through. I don't think that's a solution. We want a solution, I'd be glad to talk to anyone in authority here, candidly, or together, or whatever. I'm also going to all the shepherds in our community, to bring them some solutions that they're responsible financially for, according to the word. So, it's just not you guys, it's everybody that's involved, but I would love to share my heart, and at least have you guys make the discernment of whatever to go from there, because it was not addressed.
If you could leave your contact information, Jason is standing in the back of the room, he can give you a blue sheet of paper that you can write your contact info on, and somebody will get back to you, okay?
I would love that very much.
Okay, thank you.
I would very much have, like, that opportunity.
Okay.
Thank you.
If anybody else was wanting to speak during public comment, I just want to remind you all, it's not an opportunity to get two more minutes on the homeless issue, but if you have something else, this is the time.
Hi, folks, I'm Jordan Mortensen, I'm the owner of Rec Tech, so I do camera security here locally, and I've worked with the chief, we have this surveillance trailer, so it's like a mobile solar-powered trailer, and, you know, to help this problem, I'd love to help, you know, put that out there to help monitor the situation. Just give me a call, you know, I don't really need to make money on it, it'd be good, but, you know, if there's, if there's something I could do to help the community, I've been here for 20 years, so, and I actually entered Grants Pass homeless, and I went through the Gospel Rescue Mission, and then, you know, got my stuff together. So, you know, if there's anything I could do, the trailer, I just built this thing, it's at the fairgrounds right now, you guys can take a look at it, let me know, I'm just, I really want to help, so, thank you.
Again, can you leave your contact info at the back of the room? Thanks. Anybody else? All right, we'll close public comment, and I don't know if anybody else wants to respond, but I was going to start off and just say thank you, Mike, for your great attitude, I really appreciate, you've been a great problem solver since the first time we met, and just remind everyone, you know, what we've already said tonight, this is a starting point, not an ending point. We have had a situation for the past four years where we've had homeless people camping in every single one of our parks, including Baker Park, as you well know, right? And it has been problematic, and yet we do need to allow places for homeless people to go, and so this is going to consolidate that into fewer locations than what we've been dealing with for the past four years, it's, it's not perfect, it's a temporary plan. We'll keep reviewing it, as council has, you know, repeatedly said, we're going to look at different locations, we do have other ideas and projects in place to, to keep this away, but our whole goal is to try to move people as much away from parks and schools and neighborhoods as we can. We know this isn't ideal for our police and firefighters either, there's not ever going to be a perfect place, but this is just a temporary solution, and we're not going to forget about you. So, anybody else want to follow up tonight? All right, let's move on to the next item on our agenda then, which is our emails, anything to report?
So there were two requests, requests to reconsider allow camping in Riverside Park, a request to allow camping, reconsider camping at Parkway Station, and a request to consider purchasing the Schoolville lot for homeless camping.
Thank you. Next up is our consent agenda, and these are items of such routine nature, without controversy, that they may be approved with a single action. Council president, will you please read the consent agenda?
Resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the Collusion Road multimodal path, project number TR-6359. Motion approving the minutes of the city council meeting July 17th of 2024, and motion to acknowledge the minutes of various city committees and commissions, including the Historical Buildings and Sites Commission, Parks Advisory Committee, Sustainability and Energy Action Committee, Committee on Public Art, Urban Area Planning Commission, Collaborative Economics Development Committee, and the Housing Advisory Committee. And with that, I make a motion to approve.
Seconded by Brian. No discussion on the consent agenda, so Vanessa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
DJ?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Matters from mayor, council, and staff, did anybody have something you wanted to bring up tonight? Dwayne?
I just want to thank the many hours that were on this subject tonight, I mean, I think people came together that normally wouldn't come together, I spent many hours talking to Brian, my new friend, and Rob, more than many times, that we don't always agree on things, and the staff, you know, doing what we asked them to do, even after we made changes, and, you know, this was a lot of hours of people talking and compromising, probably the most compromising we've done probably since I've started here, to make things work for the people of the city, so even though I'm not, you know, running around here going, yay, but I do think we've, we've actually done something that's the people wanted us to do, and I, I just want to thank everybody for doing what we've been asked to do, and, and it does feel good when we all work together, thank you.
Anybody else? Thanks, Dwayne, you gave DJ all the feels there. All right, staff comments. No, they are ready to go home, no executive session tonight? Brian?
Motion to adjourn.
Still Vanessa's glory, but she'll second it here. All in favor of adjourning tonight, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, see you in a couple weeks.